I'm going to call this meeting of the Hingham Select Board to Order. Time is six o'clock and I will begin with our preliminary announcement. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording this meeting? Seeing none, I will note for the record that members of the board participating this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. First item on our agenda is to consider approval of the minutes of August 3, 2021. I am prepared. All right, Liz and Bill, are you prepared?
Yes.
And I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minute stated August 3, 2021.
Bill, I'm not hearing you. Did you second? Bill? Can you hear us?
I'll text him. Bill, can you hear us now?
I can hear you now, yep.
Okay, great.
So, Bill, so Liz made a motion to approve the minutes of August 3?
I would second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
And Joe Fisher.
Aye.
And I am next like to have a moment of silence in memory of Bill Friend and then I may ask Liz Klein to say a few words. Thank you. Liz?
Yes, thank you. Before we want to move on with the agenda, we did want to honor Bill Friend, a longtime member of the South Shore Country Club Management Committee. Sadly, Bill passed away unexpectedly on August 3 from heart failure. Bill was a lover of life, a humorous storyteller, and dedicated Ohio State University football fan. Bill was an accomplished attorney and held senior-level corporate executive positions throughout his career with responsibility for legal departments of public corporations where he provided expertise in general corporate, real estate, contract, trademark, employment, bankruptcy, and securities law. In his retirement, Bill proudly volunteered for and served on the Board of Directors for New England Wildlife Center in the South Shore Country Club. We will be forever grateful for the contributions Bill made to Hingham. He was a trusted advisor and dear friend to the staff and volunteers at the Country Club. His dedication, steady leadership, and warm smile made Hingham a better place. We're instrumental in improvements at the Country Club as well as securing the Lennar property. Our deepest sympathy to Bill's wife Linda and daughter Elizabeth. Our Hingham community shares in your sorrow as we will all miss a true friend.
Yes, thank you, Liz. We will miss him. He's been important to the town. And it's tough sometimes when these losses hit us. So it's just, it's moving and it's appropriate that we pause at this time. So, thank you, Liz. Next item on the agenda, we originally were going to be hearing from the Traffic Committee. That has been postponed to another meeting so that if there's anyone who is tuning in or who's attending with respect to, or was expecting to hear from the Traffic Committee concerning parking along Beale Street, Lynchfield Parking Lot, that discussion has been rescheduled for another meeting. Next item on our agenda is to consider the approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Kelsey Povetto. Did I pronounce that right? On behalf of the McCourt Foundation for Tour de South Shore at Wampatuck State Park to be held on September 26, 2021 from 10:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Is Kelsey here or Jeff? Jeff on the line?
Joe here, representing the McCourt Foundation and supporting Kelsey.
Could you just walk us through this, please?
Yeah, of course. This is our annual Tour de South Shore ride. Stated here, we're just looking for the permit from 10:00 a.m. to 1:30. And we will be out of the park by 5:00 p.m. with our breakdown. Bike ride through four towns ends back at Wampatuck. And yeah, that's basically run a show. We'll be there prepping at 5:30 a.m. and out of the park by 5:00 p.m. It's a 25- and 50-mile bike ride with a 5K inside the park.
I see. From the Police Department, we have Ryan O'Shea. Have you had a chance to review this and do you have any concerns?
We haven't had a chance to review it. No concerns on our end.
Great, thank you. Liz Klein, any questions on this?
I have also reviewed the application. No questions. It's a great event. Thanks so much, Joe.
Yes, thank you very much.
Bill?
No, just real quick. I know I'm familiar with the foundation, the great work you do. And I know this is an annual event. So the 5K is in the park?
Yeah, it takes place fully within the park. It does not leave our premises.
And where's the, what's the bike route, out of curiosity?
I can actually send you over the map if you'd prefer.
Okay, no rush on it. I'm just curious.
Okay.
It's only a great event, nothing else.
Thank you, sir.
What publicity is out there on this for the event?
We're actually currently doing our marketing launch now, online and on social. And I'm actually located in Los Angeles currently. I'll be out in Boston shortly. So Kelsey is heading up the Boston end of the marketing.
Is there a web link that you want to publicly identify at this point so that anyone who tunes in will know where to look?
Yeah, of course. Let me pull that up right now. So if you visit www.mccourtfoundation.org, you can check under Events, under Boston, and the Tour de South Shore. We'll give you all the information and registration page for it as well with an event breakdown.
Yep, terrific. And really, thank you for your efforts. Are there any members of the public who have comments or questions on this event? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Kelsey Povetto on behalf of the McCourt Foundation for Tour de South Shore at Wampatuck State Park to be held on Sunday, September 26, 2021 from 10:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m.
Second.
We moved and seconded. We now vote Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Joe Fisher. Aye, it is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to working with you all again.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to consider authorizing the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with K5 Corporation for pavement markings and crosswalk surface treatment to be completed no later than December 31, 2021. Randy or Kathy on this one?
Yes. Well, this is our annual painting contract. It was rebid out in the spring and K5 won the bid. Our last company, Markings Inc., from Pembroke, did not bid, so they won the bid. And in order to get the town all marked, then I need the contract signed.
Have you had experience with this vendor?
Absolutely. They've done it in the past. They've been very dependable and did a good job.
And I assume that you are satisfied with the bid price?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Bill Ramsey, any questions on this?
So Randy, this is for all the crosswalks in the entire town?
This is for all the crosswalks, the, all the line markings, all the lines, all the gutter lines, all the center lines, the whole town. As long as the weather holds, we can get it done.
Do you know, how many do we have?
How many what?
Crosswalks, you know?
Quite a few. We keep outing them. I don't, exact number off the top of my head.
Okay. And we usually do this in the fall, right?
We do it in the spring, right through the summer.
Got you. Great.
We try to get it done before the school starts, at least those areas of town.
Excellent. All right. Thanks, Randy.
Great, thank you. Liz?
Yes, it's just a question about the timing. So will it start immediately, Randy, then?
It'll start as soon as possible, as soon as we can get them in here.
Okay. I noticed there was reference to having it completed by December 31st.
Absolutely. We try to get it done in the summer months when the paint will stick.
Right.
Then go out at night and get it done.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. And so I'm just looking at the contract itself. It says the term commences on the date and the service is to be completed no later than December 31. What sort of progress checks do you do just to make sure that they're staying on schedule?
So we have a number of, we issue them, the things that we need them to do, such as long line or crosswalks. And then we have an employee with them at that time to make sure that it's all done correctly.
Looking at the contract itself, the bid price form, you know, I was, I was a little frightened when the top item on the first page begins with a little over $193,000. But my understanding is that the estimated amount to complete this contract work is $75,000.
$75,000 was in our budget and that's, it has gone up a little bit with all the crosswalks that we do and the added markings. So it went up from like $55,000 to $75,000. But we won't come over the $75,000.
Great. Any member of the public have a comment or question about this item? I am not seeing anyone, so I'm prepared to accept a motion on this.
I will make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with K5 Corporation for pavement markings and crosswalk surface treatment in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. How do you vote, Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye, it is approved. Randy, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Great job, Kathy, on that. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to consider authorizing the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Gordon Chevrolet Doing Business as Colonial Municipal Group for a Chevrolet 3500 utility truck for the Ware River Water System. Russ, are you here for this?
As soon as I move myself, yes, I'm here.
Hi, how are you?
How's everybody doing?
Good. Can you walk us through what's involved?
Sure. The Ford Ranger, which we took over from Aquarium when we purchased the water system, is well past its service life. It's actually becoming more of a hindrance than a help with the guys because it keeps breaking down. So it was in the budget this year. We placed two vehicles, starting with that one in particular. We're going to replace it with a 3500 utility body for the distribution crew to utilize out in the field for, you know, water main repairs, hydrant flushing, hydrant maintenance, caveout work and things like that. We went through the state contract. I want to thank Kathy for that because she helped me through that and it really helped me a lot. This company that we worked with was very responsive and they did a great job getting us back what we needed as quickly as possible.
And you saved $7,000.
And we saved, yeah, we saved $7,000. Just right, Kathy.
Even better. One of the topics that this board is focusing on for these types of contracts is to see to what extent we have looked at green alternatives, trucks that have less emissions, that we are making sure that we take the environment into account when we make these contracts and when we're looking at making acquisitions. Can you, Russ, or perhaps Tom, you can let us know what was considered in that regard for this proposal?
Yeah, Joe, I actually looked at different trucks and currently the only trucks that'll be on the market in the next couple of years will be like F-150s, that size truck.
Yep.
So this is a 3500, but Kathy did some good research and this truck is exempt from that because it's in excess of 8500 GBWR. So some examples of that are fire engines, ambulance, and public works trucks. But we are going to continue to keep an eye on those things as the water comes, you know, as we move forward to review asset purchases and make everything comply with, you know, better greener vehicles. And that will start with some of the smaller trucks that we have in the future.
Okay. And Tom, perhaps you could just briefly review why this is an item for the Select Board? We also sit as the Water Commissioners, but this is on our agenda as a Select Board?
Yeah, so the Water Commissioners would normally cover items that are setting policy for the Water Board, or for the, excuse me, for the Water Department. That obviously isn't happening here. This is about a procurement purchase that the Board of Selectmen has been given authority to purchase anything up above $50,000. So the Water Commissioners wouldn't do that. That would be a Board of Selectmen or the Select Board process.
Okay. Liz Klein, any questions or comments?
Just one clarification. Russell, this was included in the FY22 budget, right?
Yes, it's under the, it's actually in a strange place, but we put it where we thought it was the best place. But it's not a capital purchase. We're using actual funds from the Enterprise Fund to purchase this and it's in the R and M grounds because there's no real line item for it. So that was when we put it in that line item.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Bill?
Ross, how many years you anticipate we'll get out of the truck or miles?
I'm gonna, anywhere from eight to 10, I would think. Definitely eight. Because we put a few miles on those trucks. They just get worked very hard.
Yeah.
I can see eight years.
And unrelated, Ross, the hydrants around town look great. You did a good job painting them. I noticed the new coats around town, so good job on that.
They've been working hard.
Yes. Russ, when do you expect delivery?
They're saying 12, 14 weeks. Randy might know too. Randy just bought one also. I think it was 12 to 14.
I think the maximum is 16 weeks.
16 was the last one.
It's a factory order. It's a 2022 truck.
Yep. And the current truck, is that going to be continued in service or disposed of?
Currently, I'm working with the Recreation Department. They were looking for a couple of extra trucks. So we may be just a passover to them through the town. But I'll, you know, work that out with everybody once we get the new truck. I know they were looking for a couple of trucks.
Yep. Thank you. Any members of the public have questions on this item? I am not seeing anyone, so I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Gordon Chevrolet Doing Business as Colonial Motor Group for a Chevrolet 3500 utility truck for the Ware River Water System Department in an amount not to exceed $50,549.95.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Liz Klein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye, we are approved. Thank you. Thank you, Russ.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Russ.
Next item on the agenda is to consider authorizing the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with E+ for IT server storage upgrades to be completed no later than December 31, 2021. And I believe we have Bill Hartigan on the line for this?
Yes, I'm here.
Bill, thank you for all your work. Can you explain what you're doing and why we're doing this?
Certainly. This is something that was actually included in the budget. Steve had worked hard looking into this, but the existing storage system was purchased in 2016 and we quickly outgrew its capacity. It's about 22 terabytes of capacity. We're using 18 to 19, we're kind of trying to juggle things around to keep the things afloat and keep a little bit of room in there so we don't run out of room. So looked into a few different systems and I know this was on Steve's list and this is a system I looked at in the past in my prior employment. And E+ has been a long-term relationship with the town and they're on the state contract. So we worked it out and we're going to buy a system that makes heavy use of data reduction, active, what they call active, active asynchronous replication. So we'll have a node here at Town Hall and a node over in Fire Headquarters. So if we experience a catastrophic hardware failure, nobody will notice. It'll keep working, which is, you know, what we want to do. We want to make sure everything's working. And it's also in a second building, so should we experience a building issue, all the equipment will stay up and running. So in a nutshell, we're trying to stay ahead of things. We've got some more work coming up. We need more space on the server. We've got to migrate the WatchGuard Video Storage Server into new hardware that serves from 2013. And this new environment would support that migration into this storage system as well.
Bill, is this being added on to our server and storage capacity? Or is this, is this replacing what we currently have?
Yeah, this is replacing the existing EMC Unity systems that we have now.
And what will happen to our old system?
I've actually been talking to E+, they've got some people. We'll see what recycle companies might be or repurpose companies might be interested in, depending on the price, we'll work with that. Or I'm also toying around the back of my mind of building a DR configuration and moving some non-critical storage to something like this and let it live out its last days in a non-critical fashion.
And are there, is there any special housing that is associated with this unit? Or like special environmental conditions, cooling requirements, things like that?
No, standard rack and stack in our existing racking systems we have in the two facilities. So no special consideration there. Equipment will take out of service. The heat load for the new equipment, we're actually using solid-state, the new equipment, solid-state drives versus older 10,000 rpm spinning disc, which generate a little bit more heat and use more power. So we'll actually have a little bit of energy savings.
Great.
And I see it too much, but you know, about 20, 30 cents maybe.
Yep. And I assume the solid-state is, it just responds faster?
Yeah, the latency on the disk is insignificant on the new SSTI's drives.
And will there be downtime when you're doing the transition?
No, fortunately, because of the virtual environment we have now, we'll bring this in-line and bring it into that virtual cloud, which is, you know, what we have internally. And then we can just move everything over so that people won't notice a difference.
Yep. Great. Liz Klein, questions?
Yes, no, thank you, Bill, for describing all of that. One question about professional services. I noticed that was included in the contract. What does that entail?
That's for their assistance in helping us make sure we get it all configured into our existing virtual environment and help us with moving, you know, the first couple of servers over once we get our feet wet and know what we're doing. You know, these people do it on a day-in, day-out basis. It's not something we do on a regular basis, so I thought it beneficial to have a little bit of guidance on that.
Right, right. Okay, great. So is there ongoing support if you need it?
Yeah, that's built into that as well.
Great. Thank you.
Bill?
No questions. I know that we've been planning for this and it's a much-needed upgrade, so. I can hear it's moving forward.
Yes.
Joe, if you don't mind, just my jumping in just real quick. I just want to clarify, when Bill says that no one will notice that there was catastrophic failure, he actually will notice. I clarified that with him early.
And I suspect you will be, he'll notice as well, Tom.
I certainly hope I'm told.
Tom will be receiving his texts, but at least the business operations will continue without interruption.
Yep, great.
Okay, I do want to just note, I know Steve tried to get funding on a community compact last fall. That funding didn't come through, so we tried to save the town some money and get a grant for it. But, you know, the state didn't see fit to approve the funding for that.
Well, we appreciate the efforts in making that attempt.
Yeah.
Any member of the public have comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, I will accept a motion on the E+.
I will make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with E+ for server storage upgrades in an amount not to exceed $124,981.88.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded. Liz Klein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye, it is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Next item on our agenda is to consider signing the amendment to the agreement with Comcast Cable Communications Management, LLC, to extend the iNet transition date by six months to assure continued service until the fiber optic municipal area network project is complete.
So I can tee that up if you want, Joe.
Please, that would be great.
So it was probably about two, two and a half years ago that we, we were notified by Comcast that they were going to be eliminating their iNet service that provides us with high-speed internet. And they told us that we needed to get on our own, actually it's probably three years ago, that we needed to get on our own high-speed internet lines. And as a result, we subsequently put together a warrant article, went to the next town meeting and received funding to build out a fiber loop around town that will be town-owned. That was done after we negotiated, I believe it was a three-year, three-year agreement with Comcast, thereabouts, to allow us to remain on the iNet until we fill out, build out our, our own fiber, which was more than enough time, two, three times more than the time we felt we needed until a pandemic occurred. Once that happened, everything kind of hit the brakes. And now here we are, that agreement is actually coming to a close at the end of August or mid-September. And we, we needed to extend it so that we had time to build out our own fiber. The fiber project here should start within a month and it will, it will last, the building project will last a couple of months, two to three months after that. So we're asking for six months. We've talked with Comcast. They're fine with that. It's a free extension. They understand, you know, our situation and want to make sure that we're, that we're not left in the lurch. I mean, all of our public safety facilities, our Shrek, all of those agencies are running on that iNet right now. So they're not going to pull the plug on us and they know that, so.
Tom, who's building the fiber optic network?
I can answer that, Tom. It's a contract. They're provider that have done many. Their their provider that have done many, many municipalities around here. And they they're very well regarded. I had actually looked at them and my prior employee and I know they've done many nearby communities. So they're well-regarded. They're actually the ones who recommended a six-month extension with Comcast. They work with them all the time. They're very familiar with this. They've actually gotten a lot of business because of Comcast bumping people off the INET. So they're they're just waiting on delivery, Corning, who manufactures fiber optic had obviously delays manufacturing with the pandemic. And I did reach out to Brian over there today. I haven't heard back, but they expected the delivery by the end of the final delivery by the end of July. So I'm just checking to see that it came in.
You anticipated my next question, which is whether or not they thought six months was appropriate. But since they in fact recommended it, I assume they think it's appropriate. Liz Klein, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Bill Ramsey?
I have no questions.
Any member of the public have questions on this? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I'd make a motion to sign the amendment to the agreement with Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC to extend the INET transition date by six months to assure continued service until the fiber optic municipal area network project is complete.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Liz Klein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
It is approved.
Thanks again.
Yes.
Thank you, Bill. Great job.
Yeah, I mean, this this you know, in many ways, this is such a critical backbone for the entire town operation. So really, we appreciate all the work that's been done here. Next on the agenda, which is posted on at least on what I'm seeing, is not to happen until seven oh five. Am I correct on that, Tom?
Yes.
So
You can come back.
We can come back to that and then we will skip over to the next item, which is to consider a discussion and appointment to fill a tenant vacancy on the Hingham Housing Authority Board. Tom, can you just bring us up to speed on what the obligation of the town is to to fill this position on the board and what are what the timing is? I believe we're going to be be prepared to move this evening, but what our time constraints are?
I can try. So the Board of Selectmen is the appointing authority for some of the seats on the Housing Authority and we are mandated August to to complete that effort by August thirteenth, I believe.
And we received the the vacancy was duly posted and note and by the Hingham Housing Authority. Is that correct? To to make sure that the residents knew they had an opportunity to apply and how to apply?
Yes. If I can jump in on that, yes. The Housing Authority sent a notice per the new DHCD guidelines to fill this tenant seat. And any tenants who are interested were supposed to submit their interest in writing to the town clerk. And I believe two applicants did that. And they had a thirty-day window in which to do that. At which point then the board, the select board can make a decision.
Right, so we complied, the town complied with the requirements in terms of notice and giving potential candidates an opportunity to apply. And we did receive two applications and members of the select board in fact did interview two candidates, Ruth Bennett and Mariah Ash. Both candidates were really very impressive, had a lot to say. And we appreciate both of them willing to step up to fill this position. I am prepared to accept a motion for a recommendation for candidate.
I will make a motion to appoint Ruth Bennett to the Hingham Housing Authority Board to fill the tenant member seat for an unexpired term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
That recommendation has been moved and seconded. We now vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
So Ruth Bennett has just been appointed and Michelle, I'm assuming that a notice will go out.
Yes, we will let her know.
Great. And we really appreciate again, both of them stepping forward, both candidates stepping forward. And it's 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 just so important that the residents know that we take this very seriously and we look forward to working with Ruth Bennett on the board. Next item on our agenda is to consider accepting the form of assignment and assumption of memorandum of agreement by Bear Cove Investors LLC. Tom, did you want to walk us through this, Michelle, or would you like?
We have Susan Murphy is on the line.
Oh, she is?
Yep, and would be able to walk us through this if.
Okay, great. Susan, good to hear you. I don't see you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, yes.
Okay, so this Susan Murphy, I'm Special Real Estate Counsel for the town. Um, the the town had entered into a development agreement prior to the construction of the apartment complex that is known as the Cove over on Beale Street. It was a forty B project in connection with that memorandum of agreement. The developer agreed to provide certain mitigations to the town, some of which you're aware of, such as the million dollars that's going to go towards the window project up from the river school. They also agreed to make certain sidewalk improvements on Beale Street. And they also deeded to the town a portion of their land that became part of Bear Cove Park. In addition, they also committed that the project, they would never seek to make the project bigger than it is today. And they committed that at least twenty-five percent of the units would remain affordable in perpetuity. So they are at the point now where we've been notified that Broadstone Bear Cove Alliance or Bear Cove Investors LLC, which is the current owner, intends to sell the apartment complex to a buyer. And under the memorandum of agreement with the town, so long as they fulfill all of those monetary and non-monetary obligations, the town, they have the right to just assign the obligations under the MOA to their successor without the town's consent. So they can just sell the property to whoever they want so long as they assign those obligations to the successor. And the only role of the town in that is that we get to see the form of assignment that they're using and the Board of Selectmen need, you know, to review and reasonably accept the, I know, and I'm sorry. So they have to use a form that is reasonably acceptable to the town. In this case, the select board. So what you have that has been provided to you just for reference are the the original memorandum of agreement, the amendment to the agreement, the only thing that happened in the agreement is originally the town was going to get a conservation restriction, but they later agreed to deed the land to the town, which was better. So that was in the amendment. In addition, the town had the right to record at the Registry of Deeds a notice of the MOA. And so the the town, we we have had that done, a notice was recorded at the Registry of Deeds, which puts anyone whoever, you know, owns this property on notice about these obligations with regard to the size of the project and the affordability of the project. So that's, that was in your packages. And then also the the document that you're voting on is the form of assignment and assumption agreement. They provided the form, the track changes that you see in the form were my changes that I made in order to clean it up and clarify it. Those changes have already been, were sent last week to Bear Cove's attorney who has reviewed them and they've been okayed. So at this point, the the it's really more of an administrative act by the board to just, if you agree that the form is reasonable, to accept the form. And then that's the form that they will use so that the new buyer will assume those obligations under the agreement. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
So thank you, Susan. That was very thorough. But basically, the assignment document provides that the current owner is assigning all of its right title and interest under the memorandum of agreement and the ASNE will be accepting all of the all those obligations under the MOU, MOA. That, that's a fair summary?
Yes, that's correct.
Are there, is there anything that you had wanted in the assignment and assumption agreement that you did not get?
No, they accepted all the changes that I proposed.
Great, thank you. Bill Ramsey, any any questions on this?
Yeah, thank you for your for your work, Susan, as always. Have the obligation, so the obligations have been all been satisfied, correct?
Right, so the the deliverables, so there's two kinds of obligations. There's the deliverables, which was the money and conveying the land, et cetera. Those have all been fulfilled. The ongoing obligations are the two that I mentioned that there's a restriction that they never expand the size of the project. And there's a restriction that at least twenty-five percent of the units always remain as affordable units. So those are the ongoing obligations of whoever owns the property. And those are the obligations that are being assigned and assumed.
I mean, well, those two will exist in perpetuity, right? I mean, those are going to run with the property for, I mean, if we have multiple owners of it, correct?
Yes, because now we have the, the town has recorded the notice, so it's on the title and it will be there on the title. So they will. But it's it's beneficial to the town to have the own that whoever the current owner is at any time acknowledged that they've assumed those obligations. But yes, the town's also protected because there is a notice on title notifying the world of those obligations.
Great, thanks, Susan.
Liz Klein?
No questions. Thank you, Susan, for being so thorough and explaining all of that.
Yes.
Sure.
Any member of the public have a question on this? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion.
I'd make a motion that the board accept the form of assignment and assumption of memorandum of agreement provided to the broad, sorry, provided to the.
Provided to the board should be on August tenth, which is.
Yeah, okay, I want to check the date. On August, yeah, so on August tenth, twenty twenty-one to be entered by Bear Cove Investors LLC as successor to Broadstone Bear Cove Alliance LLC, transferring the obligations under the memorandum of agreement to a transferee of the property.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. How do you vote, Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
The assignment and assumption is approved. Susan, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Next item on our agenda is to consider appointments. And I believe we have one appointment, perhaps Bill, you'd be in a position to make the motion?
I'd make a motion to appoint Elliot Place to the Climate Action Planning Committee.
Before we vote on that, Michelle, is there a term on this appointment?
I don't believe so.
No, Joe, this was the this this group was formed until the climate action plan is completed. It shouldn't be more than a year or two.
Great. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. How do you vote? Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Liz Klein?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
It's approved. And again, Michelle, you'll you'll arrange for a notification of of the newly appointed candidate.
Yes, no problem.
Thank you. Then we will move on to COVID nineteen updates.
Sure, thank you, Joe. So unfortunately, we seem to be back into this world where we're doing these regularly again. We were hoping that that wouldn't be necessary, but obviously it is. I'll walk through some information here. So regarding COVID data, we are seeing an uptick in COVID nineteen cases in Hingham. So there were five COVID nineteen cases reported in June with no Delta variants. And then thirty-three cases reported in July, of which five were Delta variant. As of today, on on here on August tenth, we've had twenty new COVID nineteen cases that have been reported in Hingham thus far in August. As of, and we don't, of those, we don't know the breakdown of of Delta variants in those first twenty. As of last week, approximately sixty-nine point five percent of Hingham residents are fully vaccinated compared to approximately sixty-four percent statewide. So that's good. Of course, we hope that everyone is able to get themselves vaccinated. If you look at only vaccine-eligible individuals in town, which is folks over twelve, the percent is fully of fully vaccinated eligible residents rises to actually eighty-two percent, which is nice. Regarding vaccine and testing, so COVID nineteen vaccines are available locally at the following locations. CVS in the shipyard and on South Street. They are available by appointment or walk-in at either location. So they're also available at Walgreens on Lincoln Street by appointment or walk-in and at the Hingham Center Pharmacy, available only certain days though. So you, they, so folks should call if you want to go to the Hingham Center Pharmacy. You should call seven eight one seven four nine one two seven seven on the morning that you would like to have your your vaccination scheduled. Regarding COVID nineteen testing, tests are available at the CVS in the shipyard though by appointment only. So if you're looking for a test, you should reach out to CVS in the shipyard and schedule an appointment. Masking guidance, so as has been our practice, we'll continue to follow the mass DPH COVID nineteen guidance. So as of right now, we are recommending the following for municipal facilities in line with the current DPH protocols. For fully vaccinated individuals are advised to wear a mask or face covering when indoors and not in your own home if you have a weakened immune system, if you are at increased risk or for severe disease because of your age or an underlying medical condition, or if someone in your household has a weakened immune system is at an increased risk for severe disease or is an unvaccinated adult. Others, so all unvaccinated residents are advised to continue to wear masks in indoor settings and when they can't socially distance. I'll say that again. So all unvaccinated residents are advised to continue to wear masks in indoor settings and when they cannot socially distance. We are continuing to monitor the evolving COVID nineteen situation and our health department remains in constant contact as always with the Department of Public Health of Public Health at the state, the DPH.
Bill or Liz, any questions on the report?
Just real quick, I will thank you for that. I know the door I entered Town Hall last night and had that advisory on it. Have all the entrances of Town Hall have that mask advisory guidance on it?
They do, and the advisory, I believe, is also on other municipal buildings such as that the public would enter, right, that the library, the DPW and those those facilities as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Liz?
No question about the report specifically, but just wondering, Tom, are there any discussions with empathy about opening the testing site?
Oh, yeah, that's a good question, Liz. We hadn't you know, we had a command group meeting discussion today in large part was centered on masking mandates and and what others were doing across the state and the region. But we did not cover that. I'll bring that up to the group. We're going to be talking again tomorrow. We didn't cover that question. I'll I'll run it through the through the group and see what they think. We did talk a little bit about, you know, if the schools open and to the extent that or when the schools open. When the schools open, geez, I'm going to get myself in a lot of trouble. When the schools open on time and as expected, the we are, we're likely to be, to want to offer some testing facilities if the teachers' union is interested in that. So we want to make sure that they're feeling comfortable and we'll provide testing as needed.
Great, thank you.
The good news is the. The good news is the CARES Act is providing us with the resources to continue to do that. And we still have, of our 3.6 or so million dollars allotment in CARES money, there's still some $400,000 available through the end of December. So we're, we're in good, we're in a good position.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Welcome. Are we aware of any members of our, of the senior community that are having problems obtaining the vaccine that have reached out to us, or that we should be reaching out to them to make sure that they're, you know, they can get it if they need it?
I know Jennifer Young in our, our senior center does a great job of reaching out to those in her orbit that generally and regularly would, would seek assistance on such things. I believe that's happened. Michelle's nodding, I believe it has. So to the extent anyone does need help and, and either has already been reached out to or has declined help and now wants to go get a, a shot, they should absolutely reach out to the, to our office or to the senior center and we will 100% find a way to help them get their, get their vaccine.
Great. And I know that you went over the places where residents can obtain vaccines in town. Thank you. I, I know there was no implication that you need to get it in town. So if you, if you're in Weymouth and you want to go there, I mean, that's, it's, it's just you, you want whatever's available here. And which was great. And, and the same for, for testing as well.
Yeah, great point.
Okay. Good. Any member of the public have questions on the COVID report? Seeing none, then I will open the meeting to public comments on items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who have comments they'd like to make on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will move on to the town administrator and select board member reports. Tom?
I, I don't have one tonight. Thank you, Joe.
Michelle, anything you wanted to add?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Great. Liz Klein?
I just wanted to share in regards to Bill Friend. There are, there is going to be a celebration of his life at the South Shore Country Club on Wednesday, September 1st, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. And all are welcome to come and share a story. The country club will also be hosting the annual Bill Friend Golf Tournament. And that is scheduled for Monday, October 4th, with proceeds benefiting the club.
Liz, what was the first date? Did you say September?
September 1st.
September 1st?
Yes.
Got it. So that is the Wednesday before Labor Day. Yes.
Yes.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Bill?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. We are still in session because we have one item that I believe we cannot take up until 7:05. Tom or Michelle?
I could do a little soft shoe if you'd like.
Only if you'll sing along with that.
Do you have any jokes to tell?
Are, are there any items that we've not covered that I inadvertently missed?
No, other than for me to tell, Michelle, never say those words to Joe Fisher, Michelle, good lord. Do you have any jokes? No.
Okay, so we have about 10 minutes, so why don't we just go into recess until 7:05? Michelle, can you just post something here so that anyone who tunes in know that, knows that we have not abandoned ship, that they will be back at 7:05?
Yes, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you. We are in recess till 7:05. It is 7:05 and the Hingham Select Board is back in session. Next on our agenda is an application for a restaurant common victor or all alcoholic beverages license and entertainment license by Shojo Hingham LLC, doing business as Nomai 94 Derby Street Suite 217 Hingham. Baron, I'm not sure I can pronounce the name, Baron Buie, manager. And I believe we have Kristen and Baron on the line. Just before we begin, my understanding that this is a new restaurant that will be moving into the Rustic Kitchen Space at Derby Street. And this is the all-alcoholic beverage license application along with an entertainment license. And that the entertainment license is for background music and TVs only. So with that, are Kristen and Baron online that they can speak and walk us through the application?
Yes, thank you so much. Kristen Scanlon, representing the applicant. Signed on with us tonight is Baron Buie, who is the proposed manager of record for the location, along with Brian Moy, who is the primary owner of Shojo Hingham LLC, doing business as Nomai.
Welcome.
Thank you. By way of background, and as Mr. Fisher previously indicated, this restaurant is proposed for the former Rustic Kitchen Space at Derby Street. The concept before you this evening is for a new American cuisine restaurant with Asian flavors. So menu items will include raw bar, crudo, cold and hot small plates, sharing appetizers, entrees, as well as large format dishes for group dining. They really hope to create a fun, family-oriented restaurant, as well as a restaurant atmosphere that can be a quote-unquote fun date night spot for adults as well. And the menu will certainly reflect all of this. The fare will absolutely be approachable for all ages. By way of background, Brian, who is the owner, has been in the restaurant industry his entire life. He currently owns several other restaurant locations, including Shojo and Chinatown in Boston. They actually just celebrated their ninth anniversary, going strong. He also owns Ruckus, which is a sister noodle bar concept restaurant, which opened in 2017 nearby in Chinatown. Brian has also operated China Pearl and Quincy for the last 15 years. And he also has a Shojo Airport location and working on opening Shojo in Cambridge, near Central Square, hopefully in the beginning of 2022. So definitely adding Hingham to the list as well. He's very excited to be in Hingham. Brian grew up in Milton, he moved to Canton in 2016 and really had a strong desire to have a great restaurant to eat at and plant his own flag somewhere south of the city. Coincidentally, actually stumbled across the Rustic Kitchen Space about five years ago when he was driving through Derby Street and thought it would be a location that could need or use a great Asian restaurant. And obviously, in more recent times, when he learned that Rustic Kitchen was on his way out, he actually was already in talks with the landlord, which is WS Development, about expanding the Shojo brand. So the property made perfect sense. He loves the area and the location. And with him working and owning a restaurant in Quincy, certainly understands the dining spectrum of the South Shore and felt like a strong Asian concept was really needed for the area. As far as logistics of the restaurant are concerned, is, and as what's included in the application, the square footage of the restaurant is, all, all the logistics are essentially the same as, as Rustic Kitchen, but a little bit different of a layout, obviously, to fit this concept, but it's 6,300 square feet, with 5,300 of that being inside and about 1,000 square feet of it being on a seasonal outdoor patio from April through October. The seating for the restaurant is proposed 130 seats inside, 45 outside, and a total occupancy of 180. As far as hours of operation are concerned, they're proposed to be Monday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. As Mr. Fisher indicated as well, we do have a related entertainment license application that we submitted that includes seeking permission for background music and a few TVs, which would include two or three inside, potentially two in the bar area, one in the private dining room, which seats about 10 people, and two on the outside patio. They anticipate opening, hopefully, latest December 1st, but really aiming to get open before Thanksgiving of this year. As, I'm trying not to take up too much of your time this evening. I know we're, we're last on your agenda, but because it is a application for an alcohol beverage license, quick discussion on character and fitness of the applicant and public need. I would certainly hope, given the information that we've provided this evening and what's included in the application, that the board agrees that character and fitness is not in question for this applicant. Reputation certainly precedes him as a successful and experienced and responsible restaurant owner and operator. The company aims, and all their locations, which I think it definitely is exemplary of their success in the industry to hire the best of the best, not only taking care of their customers, but, you know, their employees as well, which shows through their success so far at their other locations. For this location, they do plan to hire about 50 to 60 employees, certainly aim and seek to hire locally as well. And again, as far as public need is concerned, this, as far as we're aware at the time of the application, the availability of this license is available because it's the same one that Rustic Kitchen utilized through special legislation for this location. And this applicant will be seeking to fill a vacant commercial space. There are tenants that was thoroughly vetted, vetted by the landlord and as the board is likely where WS takes pride and is very careful in selecting their tenants and who they entered a tenant partnerships with and knew that the quality and caliber and uniqueness of this tenant would certainly fit that space. With that being said, obviously, we're incorporating a unique concept. There's plenty of other restaurant, different restaurant types around, including Italian, American, fast casual, Greek, Mexican seafood, but nothing that quite fits the bill like Nomai has to offer. Not just for Derby Street, but for all of Hingham and the surrounding areas as well. So we hope it'll be a draw to Hingham, where it keeps residents and visitors alike in Hingham, spending tax dollars there, keeping the money in town by providing this particular type of restaurant variety, instead of people seeking a concept like this elsewhere. Appreciate your time and letting me kind of run through that with you. And we're all certainly happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Kristen, you succeeded in making us all hungrier than that we were before. So I appreciate your presentation. Liz Klein, do you have any questions?
Um, I really don't. The, the application was, was quite thorough. Thank you for the packet. We've been anxiously awaiting for you to open, so very excited. Hope it's sooner rather than later. And, and certainly, good luck finding all of those employees. I hope that you do find good.
I know. Thank you very much.
Bill Ramsey?
And you said this is the second restaurant? Hello, or the third?
Brian, what's the number?
Um, this one is my 12345. This is my seventh restaurant.
Oh, seven.
Wow.
Yeah, under the Shojo umbrella, this would be our fourth.
Awesome. Well, best of luck. It sounds like it's going to be a great addition to Derby Street. So looking forward to seeing it.
Looking forward to seeing everybody here in, in the dining room as well.
Yes. I, I have just a few questions. How does the seating for the new restaurant compare to what was previously there? And the reason I ask is because I know the planning board, and then ultimately the permit for this, had parking based upon the number of seats. So is, is this consistent with the seating that was previously at the restaurant?
It was. Ever since day one, landlord WS Development had strived for us to mirror the exact number that Rustic Kitchen was, which was, Rustic Kitchen was 180, and that includes the patio as well. The layout and the, inside the restaurant, however, is very different. Rustic Kitchen had a hard division down the middle of the restaurant, bar lounge on the left side, dining on the right side. We incorporated more of an open feel concept, so the whole place will be wide open with the bar facing the front of the restaurant. And one side of the four-faced bar will actually be on the patio side, so you can directly sit in, butt the building and look into the beautiful restaurant.
That, that sounds great. It really does. But in terms of the, just making sure we're consistent with the parking requirements, so the seating is not increased from before, because that's what I needed to hear.
Correct, it is the exact same number, 180.
Yes. And this is not a necessarily a pertinent question. I've seen it spelled S-H-O-J-O and also S-H-O-U-J-O. Is there a difference between those two spellings, or do you use one over the other?
There, there is a difference. S-H-O-J-O, which is our company name, is, it's a Japanese mythological creature that has a lot of folklore behind it. So when you come in, I'll keep, I'll explain the whole story to you.
Okay.
And the other spelling, S-O-U-J-U, is actually a Korean rice liquor. So it's a particular drink called Soju. Yes. Very, very similar, though, and trust me, it's not the first time we've heard it. So we've been, we've been confused many times about that.
I will, I will say, it, it's impressive during these COVID times when many restaurants have struggled, that you are stepping up to begin this venture in Hingham, and we really appreciate it, and I'm sure the town will be there to support your efforts. So, so thank you.
Joe, could I ask one other question? Yeah, you've, you've already gotten the, the planning board permit, correct?
We have, yes.
Yeah, okay. And probably didn't need the zoning board on this one, but because it's the same use. Okay.
Right, right. So was there a site plan review done? I, I wouldn't think they would need that, Bill, for.
They'll need, they needed the A3, but the A3 at Derby Street is kind of, if it, if the same use goes in, it's, it's not, it's a de minimis type of.
Right, right. It should be. Okay, great. Are any members of the public, oh, before I do that, I'm sorry. I should have turned this over to Ryan O'Shea, just to make sure that the police department has reviewed and has no concerns about the proposed licenses.
We have reviewed it. We have no concerns. Always nice to welcome a new business.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Now, are there any members of the public who have comments or questions on this? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion. And I believe there are two motions.
Do you want to do the first one? I'll do the second?
Sure, sure. I'll make a motion to approve the application for a restaurant common, their all-alcoholic beverages license by Shoju Hingham LLC, doing business as Nomai 94 Derby Street Suite 217 Hingham. Baron Buie, manager with the following operating hours. Monday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. This approval is subject to the approval of all applicable town boards and departments, submission of a valid certificate of insurance evidencing liquor legal liability insurance coverage, and at least the minimum statutory amounts, and the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Liz Klein, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
It's approved. Next motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the issuance of an entertainment license to Soju Hingham LLC, doing business as Naomi 94 Derby Street Suite 217 for background music in the restaurant and outdoor patio area and flat-screen televisions in the lounge during the following operating hours. Monday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Be, before we take a vote on this, Tom, are the outdoor patio areas, is that being operated pursuant to any special rules issued by the restaurant opening group? Or is it just consistent with, with the overall permit that governs Derby Street shops?
I believe it's consistent with the overall permit. I don't think we did a special one for Rustic Kitchen that would have continued through to this owner. So I believe this is operating under the existing.
Right, that's, that's my understanding as well. This one to clarify. I'm sorry. So the motion's been made. Was it seconded? Liz? Liz? Okay, moved and seconded. Bill Ramsey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liz Klein?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye, it is approved. Thank you, and we all are looking forward to your great success.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, board. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Um, so uh, bear with me one second. Uh, we previously had scheduled for, starting at seven thirty, a joint session with the advisor committee to discuss the preliminary fiscal year twenty-one financial management plan review. And fiscal year twenty-three budget planning. That joint session has been postponed to a date to be determined. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn. It's been moved and seconded. Bill Ramsey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liz Klein?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all.